That vision paved the way for Wesley Wallace Law, who became president of the NAACP in 1950 and served for 26 years. Both men, and Benjamin Van Clark, known as the Little General, played crucial roles in the desegregation of Savannah.
It was a special experience for me because up until I came to work here, I didn't know that my grand uncle, Reverend F. D. Jadan, my grandfather's brother, was the first vice president of the NAACP to Wesley Wallace Law.
We will picket, we will sit in, we will march.
Known for his ability to mobilize and organize protest, Hosea Williams was a Savannah civil rights icon.
Who was the head of the Savannah branch of the NAACP, Chatham County Crusade for Voters, registered voters in what we call today the old Chatham County courthouse.
Civil rights trailblazer and Savannah native Amelia Boynton Robinson played a key role in the passage of the 1965 Voting Rights Act.
Have self-respect, have raised pride. And nothing can stop a person from going to the top of whatever he wants to be.
We honor her here as well, but she wasn't a part of the movement. She was in Alabama when she answered that call of protests. We also pay honor to John Lewis. His photograph is here when he was 20 years old in Tennessee. And Jose would join him.
Carolyn Coleman grew up in segregated Savannah and paved the civil rights crusade from our hometown to Greensboro.
I happen to have been one of the three that was the first arrested in Savannah. That started my NAACP involvement.
When she passed away, I got a phone call from a local TV station there. And they said, "We want to talk to you about her." And I said, "Okay, great. I could tell you what she was like as a teenager." They said, "Well, she was Greensboro's Rosa Parks." And it was because of her beginnings here with the NAACP Youth Council.
The lunch counter scene is a snapshot in time brought to life when sit-ins and protests sparked the Savannah desegregation movement.
It's a reenactment of how one of the protesters might have been treated sitting at those lunch counters in downtown Savannah.
Protest in 1960 and the consequential arrest of three students here at what was once Levy's Department Store, now SCAD's Gen Library ignited the enduring movement.
I remember segregation in Savannah. And the museum talks about how those walls were taken down because of the Savannah Civil Rights Movement and the success of the boycott for over 15 months on Broaden Street of Levy's Department Store.
It was a movement that ultimately desegregated Savannah by 1963, eight months before the Civil Rights Act was signed by Lyndon Johnson. Each year, thousands visit the museum, some too young to remember what will never be forgotten.
I hope they leave with a memory. I hope they leave with hope for the future and that they tell other people about us. The Ralph Mark Gilbert Civil Rights Museum. And this is the crown jewel.[202.94][202.97][laughing]
Powerful winds aren't the only deadly force during a hurricane. The greatest threat to life actually comes from the water in the form of storm surge.
All rise. Oh yea, oh yea, oh yea. Silence is commanded by this honorable commission. All those having business, draw near.
Thank you, and you may be seated at this time. The first thing that I'm going to ask you to do, all right, and this goes for commissioners as well as the, um, everybody here, please check your cell phone. Please check your cell phones. Please check your cell phones. I've got two sheriff deputies that's being honored, and I got a third one over in the corner. And I like it, I like those jackets vests that they're wearing because it's got pockets on them. They can just slide it in the pocket and go on to the, and you have to go to the sheriff. Please, goodness, get your cell phone back, okay? Please check your cell phone. Having, having said that, let me, um, thank all of you for being here. And, uh, I'm going to, because, uh, the vice chair knows the inspirationists and invocationists better than I do, I'm going to relinquish that to her. And I said to her, um, "I'm gonna get you to introduce Father because all I can do is introduce him from what I've have written here about him." But she knows him more personally than I do. And so I'm asking Commissioner Stone if you will introduce our invocationists and our inspirationists. But I will say to the, um, to the audience, when he gets ready to indicate it's time for prayer, that we all restay in. And then following the prayer, then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Stone as well. Commissioner Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This gives me a great honor to introduce the minister of our church, who has been with St. John's for quite some time. I would be remiss if I tried to guess how long, and then that would put an age on all of us, so I won't do that. But Gavin Dunbar is originally from Canada. And from what I could recall, when he first came to Chatham County, he got off the airplane and it was the summer and his glasses fogged up, and he probably thought to himself, "What have I done?" But he has endured the heat here. He likes cooler weather. But more importantly, he has led St. John's for many years in such a positive direction through COVID, through some of the ups and downs. And I'm very proud to be a parishioner of St. John's Episcopal Church. So I won't say anymore, but I will turn it over to Father Dunbar.
Thank you, Commissioner Stone. Good morning to you all.
Good morning.
I want to offer a very brief reflection on, um, a passage of scripture and then invite us to pray. So I want to speak about a passage we think we all know about St. Luke's account of the birth of Jesus. And because it is, in fact, a very profound meditation on the nature of political power and authority. You know, in the decree of Caesar Augustus that all the world should be taxed, we think, "Well, that's political power. Power to tax, power to tell people where to go, to arrange all those resources for the purposes of the state." And Caesar's power seems absolute. But what does his decree actually accomplish? Well, it brings Joseph and Mary to David's city just in time for the heir of David's kingdom to be born. Thus, the reality of Caesar's power turns out to be nothing more than to be the unwitting instrument of divine purpose, divine providence, as testified by the prophets. And so in this story, so familiar to us at Christmas, all the pretensions of worldly pomp and power are confronted and dismissed. Here is indeed our pride humbled. Here is boasting put to silence. The great voice from heaven said, "The kingdoms of this world are become the kingdoms of our Lord and of His Christ, and He shall reign forever and ever." And the prophet says, "The wolf also shall dwell with the lamb, and the leopard shall lie down with the kid, and the calf, and the young lion, and the fatling together. And a little child shall lead them." I ask you now to stand as I pray for the leading of a little child. Oh Lord and Father, you have given us a little child to lead us, even Thine own Son, who is born for us, the heir of David's kingdom. And we ask Thee to humble our pride and still our boasting, that we may have grace to follow Him in Thy ways of justice and peace. And for His sake, we pray that Thou wouldst give to those entrusted with authority in the office of the county commission wisdom and strength to know and to do Thy will. Fill them with the love of truth and righteousness, and make them ever mindful of their calling to serve the people of this county in Thy fear. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, great David's greater Son, the heir of all kingdoms and of the kingdom of God. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Stone?
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Father, Commissioner Stone told me that you being from, you being from Canada, you don't like the hot weather. And whether you made a mistake or not, you overcome that. And so you have been here with us for quite a few, a long time, and we thank you for coming and being with us this morning. And we appreciate you sharing your words of wisdom and sharing your words of comfort with us, especially during this time. We look forward to having you again, all right? Thank you so much. Roll call.
Chester A. Ellis, chairman.
Present.
Helen L. Stone, District One, vice chairman.
Present.
Kennedy Adams, District Eight, chairman pro temp. Melinda Scott Hodge, District Two.
President.
Abby Lafferty, District Three.
President.
Patrick K. Farrell, District Four.
Here.
Tanya Milton, District Five.
Present.
Erin Whitley, District Six.
Here.
Dean Kickley, District Seven.
Here.
At this time, we will call on, um, Commissioner Milton.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am excited today to welcome our new, one of our new youth commissioners. And I'm just going to say his first name because I can't say the last name. I'm gonna let him say. But this is Vidaan.
Vidaan.
Vidaan. Oh, so you said it, okay. But Vidaan has an interest in medicine. He's a junior at Jenkins High School and is thinking about going to Augusta. But that's, you know, when you're a junior, you have a lot more time to think about what the final analysis will be. But he's already making applications, so I'm sure he's in. He's interested in, was it cellular? Cellular biology.
Turn that mic on so we can hear that.
Cellular biology?
Yeah, cellular biology. And I was like, "What is that?"
So, so since she asked you that question, I'm gonna have you spend some time telling us what that is. Go ahead and pull the mic closer to you.
So what cellular biology is, is basically just the study of how the different cells work and how they react to different viruses and diseases.
Very good. I think you-
Chairman, may I just say this to him? When you find out, please let me know.
But welcome to our commission meeting. And we are hoping that you will gain some knowledge from this that perhaps may help you with your cellular biology. Because you'll see we got different personalities. So I'm sure all that's connected. Is that correct? Very good, very good. And if you have any questions, please chime in. Thank you.
Thank you for being here today. And please be, feel free to take part in the proceedings that go. If, if there's something that you want- If, if there's something that you want to say or question you want to ask, in case I get distracted, just raise your hand and somebody let me know that you want to speak, okay? All right, thank you. Proclamation celebrating, uh, St. Thomas's Episcopal Church's 100th anniversary. Those who are here to represent, if you come to the podium. I'm going to read a portion of this resolution, and then I'll turn it, uh, proclamation, I'm sorry, and then I'll turn it over to you for comments and anything you might want to say. The county of Chatham, Georgia, proclamation. Whereas in December 1922, St. Thomas Episcopal Church was established on the Isle of Hope on two lots donated to the church by, is that Maria Henderson? And the historic St. Thomas Chapel was completed and dedicated in December of 1923. And whereas St. Thomas Episcopal Church has been and continues to be a vital part of the Isle of Hope and the Chatham County communities through its service and community outreach. And whereas since 1997, St. Thomas Thrift Store has served the community by giving over $750,000 in grants to community organizations serving the citizens of Chatham County. Now therefore, I, Chester A. Ellis, Chairman, on behalf of the Chatham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby salute St. Thomas Episcopal Church in recognition of the occasion of the 100th anniversary of the completion of the historic chapel, which, in addition to the sanctuary, continues to as a place of worship for the St. Thomas and surrounding communities, and honor those founding members of St. Thomas Episcopal Church who in faith began this work. And we are honored, and we honor all of those whom during those many years have faithfully worked to see that the church continues to grow, thrive, serve this community. And witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hands and caused the seal of Chatham County, Georgia to be affixed as 15th day of December 2023. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much. I'm the Reverend Melanie Lindberg. I'm the rector of St. Thomas, and on behalf of St. Thomas, I'd like to thank the county commission for issuing this proclamation on our behalf. We are looking forward to hopefully at least 100 more years of ministry here among the people of Chatham County. And I would like to take a moment of personal privilege to invite all of y'all to our street party that's happening tomorrow night, starting at 5:30 on St. Thomas Avenue, to celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and, and we, we look forward to that. Those of you who are not tied down today and tomorrow like I am, if you would please use your time to enjoy and be a part of them. Would you just turn around so that she can make sure we get the picture in our archives?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we, we appreciate the work that you continue to do for our, um, community. The second is a proclamation congratulating Brian Hart. He's here. He will come on, and Judge Sapp. Oh, and since I see Judge Sapp coming, let me also say that we have the constitutional offices of Sheriff Wiltshire and Commissioner Jackson in the audience with us. But, but we want you to come on. Yeah, come on, Mr. Hart. The Chatham, uh, the county of Chatham County, Georgia, proclamation. Whereas the intention of the Chatham County Board of Commission is to focus attentions on noteworthy occupations and individuals. In that regard, it is with great pride we salute the State Courts of Chatham County Clerk and Court Administrator Brian K. Hart. And whereas Mr. Hart has served the county's, the court system in our community for over 32 years. Now, that's a, that's a time to stop and applaud. Whereas Mr. Hart began as administrator of Chatham County Record Court, or Recorder's Court, I'm sorry, before moving to Chatham County Juvenile Court, and then succeeding into the State Court. Now therefore, I, Chester A. Ellis, Chairman, on behalf of the Chatham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby applaud and salute State Court of Chatham County Clerk and Court Administrator Brian K. Hart, and extend our appreciation and gratitude for the many contributions to the betterment of Chatham County during his tenure as judge, and extend wishes of prosperity, good health, and happiness during his retirement. And witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hands and caused the seal of Chatham County, Georgia to be affixed as 15th day of December 2023. The mic is yours.
I will, thank you, Mr. Chairman. They say there's a season for everything, right? And as I look around the room at a lot of people I know here that I've worked with in government and in the county and the city for a while, I noticed that for some of us, there's a lot of snow on the rooftop now, a little gray in our beards, maybe. And what that means is that it's getting that time for some of us, and it's that time for Brian. And I know that a lot of folks in this room have worked with Brian for years. And we've all worked with folks in government before, and I'll tell you this. There's not a better, more honest, more ethical, more professional employee than I've ever worked with in government or in business than Mr. Hart. And so we're gonna miss him, the county's gonna miss him. A lot of folks look to him for guidance and for best practices here and around the state. So I appreciate the commission doing this. It's an honor for Brian, it's an honor for the state court system to do that. We always appreciate your support. We're gonna miss Brian, and David Wood is gonna be Mr. Hart's successor. So David's been appointed. I, I say successor because you can't have a replacement for somebody like Mr. Hart, but we have all the confidence in David, so thank you very much. Brian?
Thank you, Judge. Thank y'all for this honor. Talked too long, you know, try to cover 32 years. But let's say, I've been with the county officially, I guess, 18 years, but like I say, in the court system, 32 years, and started in Recorder's Court, which is kind of a unique position to be in because you work with Chatham County and you work with the city of Savannah. So I got to know Human Resources Director, Mr. Cagler at the time, Linda Kramer, which I don't think was even finance director, I don't remember what your position title was. We worked together a lot, and so I met a lot of, of county folks and, and, and the city folks. It's been an honor to work with those. Of course, you don't get to be 32 years in without having a lot of people around you that have done a good job and support you. Got two folks here, Joanne and David, who've been honored for years of service, and then Amy Stewart back here who's been, I'm an admin and wears many hats within our organization. I think I got trained on how to manage the jail and pay attention to jail population by, I don't know, were you Captain Wiltshire in '91? Or Captain Wiltshire at the time? So, you know, it's been, it's been a great experience and, like I say, getting to know everybody. One thing that was kind of interesting being in Recorder's Court, I'd like to tell this story, and then I'll get out of here, is Michael Brown at the time asked me to prepare a memo about some issue or something that may have been going on, I don't remember what it was, to send to County Manager Russ Aitbold. And so I gave him a few things. He'd made it his own, signed off on it. About a week later, I get a call, County Manager Russ Aitbold, asked me if I'd help him prepare a few items to respond to an email, I mean, a memo from the city manager. And I said, why don't y'all just let me talk with myself and we'll get this done. As I recall, it worked out just fine, but again, thank you for the recognition. People have asked me, say, what are we gonna do without you? Everybody'd be fine without me. I think the question is, what am I gonna do without all of y'all? So, thank you.
Thank you for. Mr. Hart. Mr. Hart, there are, there are two things now. We applaud you and we congratulate you for your retirement, but there are two things you cannot do. All right? Both of them, you, um, are a must you must do. Number one is the honeydew list you gonna get? You have to carry that out?
Yeah, I got a porch starting in January.
But then there's also that cell phone number that you have? You can't change it. So we will be calling on you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I, from, from staff perspective, before Brian gets away, uh, you know, contrary to popular belief, dealing with some of the judges over there is not the easiest thing to do. And I really appreciate whenever we had something contentious going on, you know, I could always depend on Brian to call, and we would, would talk it out, and he'd say, well, you know, Michael, I'm just a messenger, but this is what they're requesting. And he would always help me work through it, and we'd find a solution. So I, I want to thank him for his level-headedness and his ease to work with over the years. And I asked Judge Sapp, you know, the judges, they can, they can write orders. And I said, Judge, can't y'all do an order to kind of keep him? But Judge said, well, that wasn't working, they'd already tried that, so, uh. But I really want to thank you for your years of service, and, and being able to work with you have made what we do a whole lot easier.
All right, thank you so much. At this time, we call on the manager for employee service awards.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask our human resource team to come forward so we can introduce and rec, help recognize county employees who have served, reached various levels of service to the citizens of Chatham County.
Thank you. So in this season of giving, we are going to recognize employees who are celebrating milestone service awards. Milestone service awards are celebrated at the 5, 10, 15, and so forth award stage. This is a time that we are celebrating and expressing our gratefulness for employees who have served Chatham County, have served citizens of Chatham County, employees of Chatham County with a period of their career, and sometimes the duration of their career, as is in the case with Brian. We are very thankful and very, very grateful to all of you. So we're going to begin today with Ms. Thashia Curry with the Tax Commissioner's Office with 25 years of service. Ms. Joanne Darden with State Court with 25 years of service. Sergeant David Gold with the Sheriff's Office with 15 years of service. David Wood with DUI Court with 15 years of service. Lieutenant Isaac Guthrie with the Sheriff's Office with 10 years of service. Ms. Marie Lonnan with the District Attorney's Office with five years of service. Ms. Natasha Winters with the District Attorney's Office with five years of service. All right. Together, this group is celebrating collectively 100 years of service. Thank you from Chatham County.
On behalf of the Chairman and the Board of Commissions, we thank all of you for your services. What you do makes this county run in the efficient manner that it is being ran in. And so we just thank you all for what you contribute to that effort and to those jobs, all right? Thank you so much, and, and we're glad. But let me say this now, here come the downside of what we're doing. Y'all gotta go back to work. All right, thank you all so much. Listen, hey, 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 know the routine. She keeps sliding down, too. Short people always like to sit high. All right, at this time, let me call on the President and CEO from Savannah Economic Development Authority, who has come to talk to us about the workforce study, and then some, I hope you're prepared. I hope, um, Mike prepared you for other than that, because other than that is coming your way.
I, I did get a hint, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. All right, I just, I, I, we need to answer some questions and get some things on the right key.
Yes, sir.
All right?
Yes, sir. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having us here today to talk about the results of a comprehensive workforce study. Before I move forward, I just want to thank the Chairman and the Commission for all the wonderful help and assistance and leadership, and also the staff for all of the projects that we've been working on lately. There's been an incredible amount of growth over the last five years, and couldn't do it without you, sir, and the, and the commission and the staff. And I just want to say thank you very much. It's been, it's been unbelievable of all the activity that's going on. I'd like to introduce Anna Chafin, Jennifer Collins, Maria Whitfield, and Justin Farquhar. And we'll talk about them in just a moment, but I want to thank them for being here as well. But we're gonna introduce them at the, towards the end of the study results, and we'll tell you why they're here. I don't know how to get to the PowerPoint. Did I just hit a button?
We got, we got, we got your help for you.
Thank you. I am presenting the Chatham County Seal today. So what I wanted to do today is kind of jump into a little bit of background about the study. We hired a premier consulting firm whose sole purpose is helping communities work through workforce development issues, challenges, things of that nature. So Wadley Donovan Gutschaw, they're, they're a nationally renowned firm. We brought in earlier this year, they completed the study, and we've gone through different reiterations of the study, and we've now prepared to share it with the public. We debated internally about whether or not we wanted to do that, simply because some of the results of the study are alarming. Some of the results, results are not going to be a surprise. But at the same time, we knew we had to share the numbers, get people, hopefully, to pay attention, and we're gonna need a lot of help because we have a lot of people to hire in a short time to do it. So we're gonna go through all that, and, and, and Mr. Chairman, as, yes, sir.
Did you decide to share the alarming results after Michael informed you that these people wanted to, to berate you? Go ahead, I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Mr. Kickley, it's been a great meeting. Y'all have a good break.
Break our town.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
But before I do, we get a lot of questions about the metal plant. I thought I'd give a quick update, Mr. Chairman, as we go into the study. We're happy to share with some of the, you know, the, the company is now starting to release visuals. And I know, Mr. Chairman, you've seen them, but I thought we'd just kind of give you an update on where we are. The pond in the back was completed this morning. It's a 180-acre stormwater retention pond, one of the largest in the southeast for one project. But it was, we're glad that that's done, and that was part of the JDA's. And that was part of the JDA's work. And then you look here, you'll see kind of layout of the plant. This is kind of a good visual. If you're looking southeast from, if you're looking towards the southeast, you'll see the assembly, welding, the paint shop, stamping, parking. There's going to be a great ecological park in the front that parallels I-16. This park is larger than Forsyth Park, and it'll be used for the employees and also folks that, it'll be open to the public at times as well. But everything is underway. It's on schedule. There's an exhibit hall that'll be in the front office building kind of behind that. And you'll see the front of the plant as it faces I-16. And then that building in the back is the battery facility. Well, we're going to talk more about that in just a moment. The, you can kind of see what it looks like during the day up top and then what it'll look like at night. It's going to be probably the most premier manufacturing facility in all of Hyundai's system. They have built 42 manufacturing facilities. But this is by far the most advanced and with technology, the best technology, robotics, you name it. This is another visual of what the facility will look like as you're looking southwest. And then of course, the parking. And something happened with that visual. And then here's some updated photographs. These were taken about a week and a half ago. You'll see that a lot of work has been completed. It's hard to believe that this facility, the construction started on January the 19th of this year. And they've been able to do all this in the last 11 to 12 months. Truly record speed. Here's some other pictures. This is the paint facility. This is probably the, kind of the longest lead time due to the things that go on in there and the weight and the pylons and the sophistication of the equipment. So this came out of the ground first. And you'll see that all the paneling is up. The stamping facility is another big part of the operation. Utility site, the battery facility, this is going to be built behind the site. And that is under construction now. You can see that they're putting the footers and pylons in there. Another picture as you're looking from the, kind of the back of the site towards I-16. And then that's that. So I just thought I'd give y'all a quick update. And then I think they've hired about 400 people so far year to date. And they'll be, continue to hire more and more as the process moves forward. So of course, with this project and all of the other manufacturers growing leaps and bounds in our region, we knew we had to come to the table and talk about workforce. And again, like I said, there's some alarming things in here. And there's some strengths and weaknesses. And a lot of the stuff, I think you'll certainly be familiar with and things that you've heard along the way. But the scope of the study really came in and did three things. A market analysis, and it came up with immediate needs and challenges. And then, of course, what we think is probably the most important is a workforce plan of action, which is great because we, you know, we got the information we needed and we got to learn where our deficiencies are going to be. But at the same time, they said, in order to overcome this, this is what you got to do. So we do have a plan, and we're going to talk about that in just a moment. So the expansion rates are remarkable. When we did the study, we're glad to report that the respondents of the study was above average, which is very important. 22 companies that participated, 40 other companies did the electronic survey. And the survey was 93 questions. And everybody's so busy. And I was happy to see that response rate because 93 questions, you know, you can get something in email and hit delete when you see that kind of stuff. But it was great responses there. Did 19 in-person interviews and 11 virtual meetings. We did development organizations, higher education K through 12, county municipal leaders, and of course, local staffing agencies. So here are the key takeaways. And by the way, this report is available online at our website, savannahjda.com, and so is the summary. So here are the key takeaways. Overall, again, some of this is not going to be a surprise. The labor supply is extremely tight. And we know that. It's not just here, it's all over the United States. We've also noticed that competitive pay and enhancing employee retention have become increasingly important. You know, keeping employees is the name of the game. And companies are having to do a lot of different things that they normally don't do in order to keep the employees. We know that future demand will vary, but top needs will continue to be the technical and production roles. And this is the part that's going to really be important for us to focus on. And then the workforce development initiatives must work to draw more high school graduates to the table. Instead of, you know, what we got to do is do a better job with high schools and giving kids more options on trades and other things that they can learn so they can be hirable right out of high school instead of the whole notion, you got to go to college, you got to go to college. And when you see what these jobs are paying and you can graduate from high school at 18 years old making $70,000, $80,000, $90,000 a year, we really need to talk about that and really, and work hard with our school systems. One of the things I found alarming to me, the annual labor that departs the military, that we're not utilizing that the way we should. And another survey we did recently shows us that the folks that exit the military, whether it's Hunter Fort Stewart, Naval Air Station Beaufort, CRTC, 165th, we've got a lot of military assets that we're not doing a good job taking advantage of those folks. And in the survey we did shows us that at least 75% of those folks want to stay in the region. They don't want to move. So we've got to fix that. And then the Savannah region, you know, we got the strengths and weaknesses. And then regional employers need to do a more active role in addressing the challenges. And so we'll talk about that, too. So when we talk about labor being extremely tight, when you look at the chart on the right side, we've got, you know, our unemployment rate is hovering and stays steady around 3%. We expect the population within the four counties JDA to grow at least by 23,000, 24,000 folks over the next several years. And I think that's low. I think it's going to be more than that. But when you look at the five-year projected change and then you look at what we've got now, we've got a lot of growth coming with all of these projects. At the end of the day, we can go through all the numbers and the statistics, but supply outlook presents the greatest challenge. And by 2025, the industrial labor supply will fall short of meeting demand. And that's what's keeping us up at night. So we've got a supply here in place. When you look at the numbers, we got supply now, but it'll quickly evaporate and go away in 2025. This chart really causes a lot of concern. And I'm not trying to be over-alarming. I'm just putting it on the table for everybody to talk about. When you look at 2023 and go out to 2031, the supply balance drastically changes, as I said, in 2025 to where we have a strong deficiencies in these roles. And so we're talking about in 2025 alone, we're going to be negative 1,454 on the supply balance. And that's a problem. And it gets worse, and then it slowly gets kind of better. But we're still going to be negative. And that's what you don't want to have in a community when you're bringing in all these jobs. So the market is really, we're statistically tapped out. And again, this is not uncommon to other parts of the United States. But we're going to talk about in a moment how we're going to overcome all this. Entry hourly production wages are up. That's great. We knew that about a year and a half ago, $15 an hour seemed to be part of the conversation. Now it's $18 an hour. So we're definitely seeing an increase. The Development Authority, when we get into a situation where we apply incentives, we were at $15 an hour, now we're at $18 an hour. So these numbers are moving up. And then, of course, the turnover piece, this is no secret, but the more you pay, the less turnover you're going to get. And so that study obviously talked about that as well. And then when you're talking about wage offerings for high-demand positions, when you look at the study, you know, the skilled positions, the low end are at $20. And then kind of the average is at $27.13 an hour. So the numbers are going up, you know, rising tide lifts all boats. And we're seeing that here, but we got to find the workers, right? So when we talk about potential measures to alleviate high turnover, the study recognizes that we got to be doing different things, providing better job security. I won't go over all these progressive bonuses. You know, I don't know what the last one really means, fun at work. It was kind of a generic response, but hey, let's have fun at work. And then, of course, childcare. We've talked a lot about childcare. And one of the things that we've seen coming out of COVID that there's only about 50% of those childcare facilities that have come back. So we've got a huge deficit on childcare. Again, some of this is probably, this is not new news. When we talk about the demand that will vary annually with top needs, it's all about the technical and production roles. And by the way, I want to point out, and I should have said this in the beginning, this study addresses the industrial labor market only. We don't really dive into other sectors of the economy, but just the industrial side. But when you, I'm not going over to the hiring demands, but you look just through 2027, where all of these positions lie. And we're talking about 16,000 to 17,000 jobs we got to bring online in a short period of time. The initiatives must work to draw more high school graduates. I mentioned that earlier. 84% of new hires have no more than a high school diploma, highlighting the emphasis on comprehensive training. That's a big bullet to me. You know, we've got, we've got, I don't know. When you look at the whole region, which we'll talk about in a moment, there's a lot of school systems, a lot, you know, doing a lot of different things. But what we realize is that we've got this incredible untapped resource of high school graduates that can go straight to work. There are many educational institutions and pathway programs to support local workforce needs, but the partnership piece is vital. For example, Hyundai's doing a lot of things with different institutions. Gulfstream does a lot of different things. But those partnerships are critical in getting this through. When I touched on the military piece, available labor from annual military separations is underutilized. We'd see about 400 to 500, anyway, maybe 350 to 400 folks exit just, you know, alone at Fort Stewart and Hunter Armory Airfield. And that is an incredible resource. And in fact, when we go out bringing projects into our region, we always brag about that pipeline of talent. And we're not using it the way we should. And we're definitely working on that. And of course, military spouses. And this, you know, when they leave the military, it's important to point out where they have 10 years or 20 years of service. And if they start at 18, 19 years old, they still have 20 years left to work, 30 years left. And so we're seeing that as a big opportunity. When we talk about the strengths and challenges, you know, we've got an amazing port. We've had a lot of great location decisions, growing technology-based jobs in the region. The challenges, of course, we got to get the high school graduates to trades, high wage inflation, which ends up really creating a tight labor supply, absence of childcare, limited affordable housing, available buildable land for housing, and lack of regional public transportation ops. And we're going to talk about that in just a moment, too. The regional employers must take a more active role. I mentioned that earlier with the workforce culture, proper onboarding, alternative labor sources, and in-migration recruitment. And that's going to be big. So that's kind of a summary of what the study shows us, or at least what the study tells us. But what are we going to do about it, right? I can't tell you how many studies I've seen that have come across our region that people talk about and they put on the shelf. We're not going to do that here. It's too much at stake. And so one of our initiatives, and we'll talk about in just a moment, is getting this plan in motion. In fact, it's our biggest initiative. And it's the most important thing, I think, that we can do as a community right now. We've got to proactively address all the key takeaways that we've outlined. Collaboration is key, long-term workforce development strategy, coordination between all of the regional partnerships, job seekers, students. And we got to really build on the workforce infrastructure and look at creating new programs. We've got to have a principal coordinator and an organization oversee all this. This is going to take a lot of work. It's going to be a huge, heavy lift. The study called this new operation Coastal Employers Forum. We're not going to call it that, which we'll touch on in just a moment. And we've got six task forces that we've got to address. And we've got to really get HR and just about everybody you can think of involved. So when we talk about that, we've identified six buckets or six areas to where we're going to have to really deploy a lot of resources. And I've mentioned all these, but when you look at this, I think this visual really kind of tells the story of what we got to do. There are a lot of moving parts. There's going to be a lot of people involved. But we're going to put together a coalition that's going to be much broader than the JDA four counties. It's going to be hopefully 16 to 20 counties. We're going to go into South Carolina and work with our partners in Jasper, Beaufort, Hampton Counties. We're going to go down all the way to McIntosh County, over to Evans County, Candler County, and really put a good group together that's going to come together and do all this. We had the ability. You know, the other thing I liked about the study is they identified certain areas of the United States that are doing wonderful, great things as it relates to workforce. And the study was overwhelmingly positive about Bowling Green, Kentucky. And so we've heard from several other people about how Bowling Green is more or less a model on really upgrading and plusing up your workforce. And so we took about 18 of us to Bowling Green to visit with all of the folks that do what we do on their end. And then within the JDA, the four counties, we had all four school superintendents with us and the economic development folks. And then, of course, we had Gulfstream, George Power. And so we all went to see what's the secret sauce, what's the magic? And that was a great two days that we spent there. And we learned a lot from them. But I think one of the most positive pieces that we got out of that visit was how well-aligned that a whole region is, how well they work together, how well they come together to work on these problems and these issues. And they've done it in a very rapid, a rapid transgression. So I point that out, that we've, you know, got a lot of things underway already. So when we talk about these six buckets, you know, we got to provide annual listings, guidance, all the things that we need to do with the military. Underrepresented workforce pipeline, we got to really focus on that. We need a regional collaborative effort on housing. I know that what Statesboro may find for their housing needs may be a lot different from downtown Savannah. We know that. But we've got to work together as a region, creating that data. Where can you go? What's the zoning look like? What's, you know, what's the transportation look like? So we've got a lot of housing pieces to work on all this. Education resources, I can't talk enough about what we need to do in the high schools. And then, of course, transportation. Again, it needs to be a regional collaborative effort. And then the sixth piece is, we could have everything working perfectly with the high school students. We could have everything working perfectly with military. We're still not going to have enough people to take the jobs. So we're going to have to go outside the region and market to certain key areas like Ohio. I think it's an easy story to sell, especially this time of year in northern Ohio. Illinois was identified, Philadelphia region, western Tennessee. So the study really went deep on a lot of these areas that we can focus on, on trying to bring workers here to take some of the jobs. And so we're going to put a coalition together. We're going to staff it. And we announced earlier this week, Mr. Chairman was at our board meeting on Tuesday. And so the team that's going to be in place to do all this is right here. And so Anna Chafin, who is currently running the Development Authority of Bryan County, is going to serve as president and CEO. By the way, we don't have a name yet. And we thought about kind of getting all this buttoned up into a perfect package, if you will, and kind of announcing something in February, March. But we don't have time. We got to get working now. And so getting folks on board, we're going to do all the things we just talked about. And Anna's going to lead that charge. And then we've got Justin Farquhar, who's also with the Bryan County Development Authority. And of course, Maria, who's been fantastic. She's been on board with us for almost a year now. And she's working the four county JDA piece. And then, of course, Jennifer Collins, who's been with the CETA for quite a while. She's jumping over and is going to help with that, too. So I can't thank them enough for being here. And if I get something wrong, just please come up here because I do it all the time. But I wanted y'all to see the team that's going to be led with this charge. Multi-county, a large area. And like I said, you go back to this map, this is really the area of focus. This is where we got to target. This is what we've got to do. And we're starting immediately. Like I said, these numbers ought to give some pretty good concern. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll stop there and open up to any questions. And again, savannahjda.com has all the info you need.
All right, let's start with Commissioner Lockit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sure, let me just ask you one question. I noticed you mentioned about the workforce as far as the high schools. Have you also had a conversation with our local universities like Savannah State and Armstrong, well, Georgia Southern, as far as preparation for workforce?
Yes, so we've had ongoing conversations, but it's about to really pick up now that we've got a team on board. But every educational institution in the region is going to be a part of this effort. And so we've had conversations with, we've talked to, you know, Savannah State. We talked to everybody, but they don't, this just was announced. And so we're about to go deeper, if that makes sense.
It make a lot of sense, thank you.
Let me say to Commissioner Lockit along those lines, University of Georgia, Georgia Tech, Georgia Southern, Georgia State have already inked their deals with Hyundai and others in here. University of Georgia, Georgia Tech, Georgia Southern, Georgia State have already inked their deals with Hyundai and others in here. Savannah State is liking, all right? Just want you to know the truth, all right? I don't know what the liking is, and they won't let me in the room to talk, okay? But Savannah State is liking and inking a deal. I'm talking about putting them on the paper so that you, they can take a part of that, okay?
Yeah. What we encourage is all the academic side to, to the chairman's report is to make an effort with Hyundai. You know, reach out, and I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's happening at the Savannah State side, but I know that other institutions are doing it, and they're inking these deals, so.
All right, let's go, let's go on to Commissioner Whitley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Tolleson, thank you for being here. All right, got a few questions. All right, so first off, when you talk about principal coordinators, that CETA is taking that role on, wearing that jacket?
Great, great question. So we're, we're onboarding the effort. We're going to fund it and get it going, starting, you know, 20, January 2nd, 2024. And our goal is to have Chatham, all the counties come in and participate through some sort of funding model to where we have more participation from different funding sources. We're going to create a 501(c)(3) for companies to donate for the educational side that really help with the high schools. So a lot of this stuff is going to be coming out as we go.
Got you. So with that being the case, you know, I think about how our SPOLS collections are so high. I know CETA stands to get a nice hefty check because of such.
I wish, I wish we got SPOLS money. But we may, we, we may, we may get some if the 10 million that comes in towards the end of the collections, I think that's right.
You will.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's, you remember the, there's a MOU that states that. That's what I'm referring to.
Wow.
So you knew that, right?
Well, I didn't know the collections were so great.
You knew that.
No, I knew, I knew the money was there, but I didn't know, I didn't know the collections were doing so well.
They're killing it. So with that, though, I, I, I wonder, all right, if we're staffing an organization, right? What about, why would we do that instead of trying to staff some workforce development initiatives?
That's all on the table. I agree 100%.
Okay, got you. Now, I see that a big focus on the workforce needs are on the mega site. And I know the CETA has done such a great job, and I'm not being facetious in saying that, in recruiting organizations to come here. What about the Savannah Manufacturing Center? You know, I know that's filling up fast. They're going to need jobs. We've got warehouses growing, coming up all over the place. Are, are we really only going to focus on the mega site right now?
No, no, that's another, that's another great important point. This effort is for all industry, all manufacturing, logistics. We're not, this, now, I would say that Hyundai is really intensifying the effort, but it's for everybody.
Right.
Everybody, any, any qualifying, any logistics manufacturing company has access to all this.
I got you. And then, so in, as it relates to the efforts in Bowling Green, and like, what were some ways that their county government got involved to help their efforts?
So they, one of the things that the, the region has done, and, and I may ask Maria to come up to explain more of this because what I've seen, the level of cooperation is one thing, but they've got programs in place, like the Leader in Me that they brought into elementary school education. It's a program that Covey, the Covey Program that they started a while back. Things like that have been overwhelmingly positive for that region. And, you know, it's a very diverse region of folks. I think, you know, 72% of the students are on free reduced lunch. They got people from all over the world. What's that? Yeah. And so they got people from all over the world. How many languages are they teaching? 26 languages.
Kentucky? All spoken in that, got you.
In the school, 26 different languages. So.
And they understand one.
What are some of their larger industries? Do you remember? Corvette.
You might want to bring it to the mic.
Yeah. And we have a Corvette, there, there's a big battery plant and other things similar to what we're doing, just going on there.
Yeah. So one of the reasons why the workforce study actually asked us to go to Bowling Green is because they landed an EV plant, a Ford EV plant an hour north and an hour south in the city of Bowling Green. They just landed a battery plant. And Corvette is there. They have a catalytic converter manufacturer there. And there's a military base an hour north and an hour south. About 20,000 jobs, very similar to us. They're just a little more ahead of us, specifically because they, as Trip mentioned, had really started to grow homegrown talent from elementary school. 99% graduation rate, which is very interesting to us. They only have two private schools in, in the area. And this Franklin Covey is actually embedded in first grade. And they have a pathway where they connect to many of the local employers at third grade, fifth grade, eighth grade. And then they, their senior year, they have a very large expo of all of the industries regionally to actually attend.
Oh, got, well, that sounds good. And I know I've personally thought about, and I've heard many conversations about us really getting trades back into the school system.
Yes.
So I'm really hopeful that this could be fruitful with that. Now, with this, one of the main points in the, the slideshow that you had, and can you email that to us? Because that's not what's on the, on the site. It's a, it's.
Yeah, we'll get to you.
Thank you. When I see, one of the points that was made in the slide was basically the wage challenge. And I think that, you know, aside from a shortage of workforce, we're also going to be, we're on the precipice of a wage equilibrium problem. And where that makes me a little bit nervous is it, is in our first responders, the pool of people that we're looking at, you know, to work in some of these, again, industry, manufacturing, warehousing, and things like that, are some of the same people who also could go in, be a firefighter, can be a police officer. So is there any plans, or has there been any thought in CETA maybe helping with, to ease the wage equilibrium gap? Because ultimately, you know, if, let's just say, right now, we know that Hyundai has their foot, the pedal to the metal when it comes to wages. They're going to pay folks. Well, that means they're not going to want to work, people aren't going to want to work, you know, in some of these warehouses or in the Savannah Manufacturing Center or in our small businesses here. So has there been any thought in put into how we can ease that, that pain, that growing pain?
Yes, that will be a part of this whole effort. Yes, yeah.
So that's, got you. All right. And then, so the last thing I had, I understand at the meeting the other day, there was discussion of CETA actually jumping into fields, studios, film studios, excuse me, or sound stages. Doesn't CETA have enough going on now?
So one of the things, we, every three years we do, we review and basically look at our incentive policy. And one of the things that our consultants brought up, brought to our attention is like with all the movie and film production activity. And we have not done a good job landing more film production studios, sound stages. And they said, well, you may want to add some incentives to the, to the toolkit in order to get them here. And so that's what was discussed on Tuesday is, you know, maybe we look at some property type activity, you know, things of that nature. And that was what, what, what was discussed in order to try to bring some more film activity.
Got you. And then that's going to add to our issue again, right? You know, because film pays pretty well.
Yes.
So I, I just want to, I want to be on record saying that we're on the, on the front end of a wage equilibrium issue that can get really ugly if we're not very proactive in addressing it. And I, I'm not just directing this, you know, I'm saying this to my colleagues also. We really got to be mindful of that. But thank you for that. And so last thing, so you were saying, when it comes to those incentives, you're looking at maybe tax abatements and the incentives that CETA already uses.
Yes. The, the stuff that's already in our toolkit, we're not changing the toolkit. We're just looking where we can do different things within the toolkit.
I got you. Well, thank you all for your efforts. I mean, again, y'all have been doing so good.
Thank you.
We got more jobs than people now.
It's a team effort.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, let me go, let me go to the youth commission. Turn your mic.
You mentioned high schoolers being an untapped source for workers. So how, or how do you plan to draw out these high schoolers that want to work in trades?
Is to get into the high school, great question, is to get into the high schools, create more partnerships. And basically, we need to go educate the students on what's available, what's out there. And then to guide those students into whatever direction they choose to go in to get the skill. And some high schools provide that skill now, some don't. And so we've got to do a comprehensive analysis on where those skills are, where they need to be. And, and then the, the coordination with the technical colleges is also important. And that's going to be part of this, this effort.
And then, so would a partnership with the high school, would it be like a work-based learning program?
Yes, that would be part of it for sure.
All right. So then my next question is, how would you compete with other work-based learning programs? Like, because my school has two with Gulfstream and International Paper. And like, how would you compete with them, or how would you say, you know, you should come try for this work-based learning than Gulfstream or International Paper?
I, I wouldn't define it as competing. It's just adding more options. And you, this, let's see, Gulfstream and IP, it's at Jenkins. Are you at Jenkins?
Yes.
Yeah. So, yeah, those programs are great. And what we would do is complement those and add more things. We're not going to, we're not going to mess up what's working.
And then would you add a, because Gulfstream, I believe, has a scholarship at the end of their work-based learning. So then, would you add that to your work-based learning program to make it more enticing, or no?
That's a great question. We're not there yet, but I would imagine, especially through the private sector, in this 501(c)(3) arrangement, there could be avenues like that where you could provide a scholarship. But again, we're just getting started. Great questions.
All right, let's go to Commissioner Milton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm excited for, for Don. He, he sounded like he's ready to apply for a scholarship right now. He wants a job right now. And I just, I commend you on taking this challenge on because it's necessary, like you said, not just for the mega plant, it's for, it's for Chatham County. And, and, and I know I go a little further back than you do, even though you've got a little bit of hair gray in your hair.
I'm trying to be like the chairman.
That's for me getting on his nerve. That's why he started agreeing like me.
I remember in high school, you know, we had trades that we took, home economics. I mean, I made my first dress in ninth grade that I haven't made anymore. But, you know, you had shop where we, we produced carpenters. And, and, and there were so many people that came out of high school that were prepared to work.
And we had that, too, at Bronza Cough. We had shop, and we, we've gotten away from that, right?
Yeah. And we got to bring it back.
I agree.
Because it, it's very important. It's very important. I, I, as I said, I wouldn't have probably, I did have a sewing machine at home, though. So, but I commend you all for taking this role on to fulfill not just the mega plant, but for Chatham County. Because we need first responders and, and I want to congratulate my Southeast Georgia leadership classmate, Justin, on his role because I think he'll bring a lot to the table. He was very resourceful in class, and he'll be good now.
Okay, you ready?
Very good. That's, that's.
Commissioner Farrell.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to circle back for a moment on the childcare issue. How, how does working parents go to work when they have nowhere to put their child, or it's so expensive that it costs more to take care of your child than it pays to get in the car and drive up to 45 or 60 miles to a, to a good job? Do y'all have anything in mind, knowing that, you know, that these people that are watching the children, they have to pay their employees enough so that they'll get good quality people that'll look after a person's most prized possession is their child?
We, we are definitely studying, and, and I wish I had a great answer for that, but it is definitely something that this coalition is going to be focused on. The, the, the childcare tax credit, which is being underutilized, we need to do more education and get people to look into that. But it starts with the employers because the tax credit sits at the employers, not the actual parents. And then we need to look at onsite activities, especially for some of these larger operations. One of the things that we're looking at doing, this is, I let the cat out of the bag, with, with Savannah-Chatham Manufacturing Center, what, what, it would be awesome if we could carve out some of that property, do an RFP, and bring in a childcare organization that could basically take children, you know, from ages one to four, you know, before pre-K, where the, where the employees can drop their children off right down the street and go to work and pick them up going home. So these are, these are things that we're all talking about doing, but it's a huge concern. And I know that y'all hear it every other hour of every day. So I wish we had a perfect model, but we don't yet.
Yeah, you know, it's easier to solve it at a large corporation with in-house care. But your smaller organizations that, that can't provide that, you know, they have the same quandaries that you've got children. You know, how do you balance all that? So I think that's a, that's an issue that's going to, seems to be getting more difficult for people to, to solve.
Yeah. I would, I would, on the small business side, I would encourage folks to talk about the childcare tax credit because it applies to anybody, any business. And I know Maria and I, that's being greatly underutilized, and it's, 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 it's a credit. I mean, employer mandate, employer does.
Could you tell our audience briefly what, what you're alluding to?
So an employer has the option to pay or provide direct payments to a childcare provider for employee. And the employee, the employer gets the credit on their, with, on their, on their taxes.
Is this for the IRS or the state of Georgia?
It's an IRS, it's a federal, there's two of them, right? It's, it's federal, but there's, there's, I think the state's looking at doing a subsidy to that. But it's a federal program that is greatly underutilized.
So the employers, a, a small business could use these to help their employee defer the cost of, of childcare?
Is there a threshold on that, or do you know?
I think it's only large at this point. I think, I want to say it's like 100 or 200 employees or something like that.
We'll get that threshold, but I know that there, when you talk to a lot of the employers here, they don't know anything about it.
Well, if you got to have 100 employees, there's not a whole lot of employees that have that many, employers that, that have that many. There's a lot of small businesses out there that are running this, this country, in this county, in this state.
I agree.
That, you know, when the goodies, when the man with the goodies comes, by the time it gets to the, to the little guy, there's nothing left in the bag. You know, there's a lot for the, for the big operations because they can tout, tote bigger numbers and bigger impact. But the, the small employers have quite an impact on the functioning of any community. So, you know, that's an area that needs a lot of attention. Now, the, the other thing I wanted to mention for your new team is not only your, your college agreements for your graduates and all that sort of thing, but you also have people that start college and find out, this isn't for me, and they drop out. Not that they're unworthy or what have you, or unemployable. They're just, for different reasons, they're just not going to pursue that degree after all. I believe that those people, if they had a, you know, if they were recruited right away and say, hey, you might not be the, the medical doctor you sought out to be, but you could certainly do this. Or, you know, you're not going to be the English teacher you were going to be, but you could work in our admin or whatever. That your dropouts are, 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 you know, the people that don't complete their college and right on down to high school. I mean, some of our, in the state of Georgia, you only, you can choose at 16 to drop out of high school. Well, most of our problems and most of our expenses in our local law enforcement community, a lot of them start, you know, when the, when a child drops out. So you could do everybody a big favor by figuring out who's, who's leaving high school and have people pay them attention, you know, before a street person gets a hold of them and shows them how to make money illicitly. That, hey, here's some great opportunities because there's a job for everybody. If you can walk and talk and speak and, you know, maybe have a driver's license, there's a job out there. And, you know, and you're probably going to make 15, 18, $20 an hour because the type, the. because the type, the market's that tight. There, there's jobs out there. So if, if we wouldn't overlook the, the folks that don't finish their high school education and don't finish, you know, if they started at college, I think those would be a prime recruiting pool for, for entry-level jobs. And once they get integrated into coming to work and making money, they can, they can certainly take off from there. There's many success stories of people that started at the bottom. And, you know, a friend of mine started at a teller at the, at a bank and now he's a corporate CEO. You work your way up.
I agree. One, one, one thing I forgot to mention, Mr. Chairman, on the education side, is right next to the, as it relates to Hyundai, right next to the plant is going to be a sixty-five million dollar training center that the state will run and operate through the technical college system. So we, I know we've got a lot of agreements, a lot of institutions doing different things, but I, I keep forgetting to point that out.
But like I say, even, even if they're not wanting to work at a factory or something, if a recruiter could call on these people and say, hey, the guy at the ice cream shop needs somebody, the mechanic needs somebody to change the oil, we need somebody to swing a hammer and tote boards at this construction site to build houses. There's lots of jobs that, that there's, like I say, if you, if you can, if you're healthy enough to get up and move around, there's a job out there for you in this, in this area. So if we, if we reach them somehow, reach out to those folks and get them, you know, show some attention to them, they'll probably, you know, hopefully they'll take one of those jobs and they'll be off on a great trajectory. And they'll probably solve a lot of our criminal justice problems with people that are floundering and just don't know how many opportunities are out there. Maybe they live in a very small neighborhood that they don't get out much.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Keglatter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Talison, looking at y'all's mission statement on CETA website, says at the Savannah Economic Development Authority, our mission doesn't get any clearer. It's to help create, grow, and attract new job opportunities and investment in the Savannah region. At that, I'll state, y'all have done one hell of a job.
Oh, thank you very much.
You, you, you doing your mission wonderfully.
Thank you.
And I mean that, I sincerely mean that. Here comes my however. However, as an elected official, my job is multifold. I not only have to promote economic development and economic opportunities for our citizens, but I think my, one of our main duties as elected officials is to at the very least maintain a certain quality of life for our citizens, if not enhance the quality of life for our citizens. I believe we have hit a point in time now where we're full. You said the, the thing shows the employment's low, low employment numbers? All you gotta do is drive towards Poole and back up in that traffic. We have already, at this point, we, not being you, you doing your job, absolutely doing your job. But we, I need, we need you to take another angle on this now. We're at a point where this growth is killing us. Because we need y'all lobbying the state of Georgia, lobbying, lobbying the federal government. Right this second, there should be eight lanes going to pass Statesboro on I-16, all the way into Savannah, at the very least. Probably to Metter would probably cover what will be needed by the time everything gets going. That should be underway right now. There should be overpasses on Dean Forest Road right now going over twenty-one, over eighty, connecting in. That's what has to happen at this point. How active are y'all in lobbying for surrounding? I, I fear that the focus being so yet wonderful, I feel as if it's a bit narrow-minded. I believe it leaves the part, it, it would leave it out there where you're not able, when you're focusing on one thing, such as just in your mission statement, I think it, it somehow, it lets you overlook the, the possible impact it would have on the immediate neighbors and the, the just immediate surrounding communities. Good example is this, is some of the mega sites out on the west side. When you're talking the multi-million dollar scheme, I've, I've witnessed, and again, for what y'all's mission statement is, good work, you're doing what you're supposed to do. I've watched attempts for y'all to lure the public into voting to approve SPLOS, pay millions, obtain the land for one type of laid-out industrial thing. You get the city of Savannah to annex you. And then all of a sudden, here comes a upgraded, high-end, terrible, terrible request to make the industrial zone a much more dangerous level for all the neighbors and everyone around. And you're straying off the plans, the master plans for the community. When you want to sell it, I think y'all need to stick to whatever you sold to the public, because that's, that's what you're supposed to do. When you tell the citizens, we're, we're, we need you to vote for your tax dollars, your sales tax dollars to put a facility in, we're going to try to attract business. It's zoned this, here's the type of, you don't come in and put that battery plant, which thankfully, after people raising Cain, is going somewhere else and not in West Chatham County. But we need y'all. If you're going to keep going with this mission trip, we now, we have to have y'all pushing for the infrastructure improvements. We can't, I mean, what, what else, what are we going to do? These, this shows, if we've got things here that we can't even get enough people to work on, my God, why do we need to create more traffic in these streets? I mean, we, it's time to join up with the Home Builders Association too. And let's make sure there's enough houses being built and there's roads to get you in and out of the subdivisions. And we can't stray off of these master plans. We can't. We're, we're now looking at an industrial, potentially an industrial just wasteland on much of the beautiful, what was once country areas of West Chatham County, where people moved out there to do it. And I don't blame them. If I personally owned land, hey, if I had twenty acres, I'd sell it at a million dollars an acre for industrial. For me, looking out for me personally, I get it. But we've got to look out for this whole community, like, like I believe we kind of did with this industrial site. We're like, okay, but that didn't benefit, I mean, that wasn't the direct benefit on this county that it would have been if it was located in this county. But in the greater good, yeah, yeah. But in the, in, in the attempt to look out for the greater good of our community, you know, I didn't hear anybody opposing it going there. I mean, it is a good thing, it's a great thing, high-paying jobs. But it would have been better that, I don't know if it'll ever revert back to their tax base or when it will or whatever, but they're the ones going to get that money. It would have been major for us to get that money. And we were the ones funding, the local government funding the great majority to y'all, I do believe. I would like for y'all to start respecting the county. And I'm not talking personally, respecting the county's wishes. If you go in and you develop a multi-multi-million dollar industrial facility, for God's sakes, buy all the ten homes sitting next to it. I've got one that I've spoke with you with a million-dollar plus house sitting right next to what's going to be an industrial wasteland. If you have a, if you built yourself a million-dollar house, I mean, buy them, trip, buy them out. Don't do that to the surrounding people. We're all for creating jobs, but don't do it at the expense of, at the expense of our citizens. This is supposed to benefit our citizens, that's our job. And again, I, I, I swear it's not a knock on you. Y'all have done your mission statement and you do it well. But we need you to expand that, man. It should just state, we're going to increase this, but at the most minimal impact to whatever, what's quality of life of surrounding, you know, whatever. We need your help, man. And I appreciate everything you're doing, but I'm, I'm crying. It's a hell of a time to represent West Chatham County. Because, hey, it's a hell of a time, because they're all upset and understandably so. And again, I don't fault none of y'all. You're doing your jobs to a T. You, you, your mission statement is accomplished. But help us get that infrastructure in, trip, to make life not as rough for all the citizens. And help us and buy some of these people. If you're going to put two-hundred-acre sites somewhere, buy those ten homeowners. It's nothing in the big scheme of that. The first lot, have them that you sell or have, I know how y'all get a lot of them and you entice them in. But there's got to be the money to take care of these folks around it too. So I appreciate you listening. And, and, and again, y'all do a great job, I promise you, and I mean that.
Thank you. When, when we talk about the SC, Savannah Chatham Manufacturing Center, we made one mistake. And that was trying to rezone the property to heavy industrial. We dropped the rezoning effort and stood by our commitment to keep it light industrial. For the record, I do want to point out that that property was rezoned light industrial in two thousand and eight. We bought it in two thousand and sixteen. So I understand and I appreciate, and we have been working with the neighbors for a long time.
I need you to buy them, trip.
But we, we went in there and bought the property as it was zoned. We didn't, we, we, and we have, we've got great, well, we want to have great relationships with them. We've done a good job reaching out to them. And we realized we made the mistake on trying to rezone it and we backed off. We're putting, we're upgrading the buffers and doing the things that we want to do as a good neighbor. But I don't, I want to make sure people understand that we went in there and bought an already zoned piece of property. We didn't rezone, we didn't, you know, we, we.
No, no, they approved, it was approved in SPLOS.
Way before.
My, my problem was trying to rezone it to a harsher industrial.
And we quit.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that, completely appreciate it.
And we, we are making sure that the companies that go in there fit within the zoning classification and they're going to be good neighbors too. And all, when it comes to transportation and infrastructure, we ask for so much stuff from Atlanta and not, I'm not trying to turn around the question, but we need a lot of help other than the Development Authority making the requests. And I think the first big thing we got to do, and we mentioned this at our board meeting on Tuesdays, we got to pass a T-SPOS. I mean, with so much, there's so much money in Atlanta that we can leverage by doing that, that we could really take care of our own problems. But we, we, it's a whole nother conversation, I didn't mean to get off track, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, yeah, don't bring, don't bring that one up. We tried three times and the rest of them turned it down, so let's move on to that. Let's go on to Commissioner Stone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that we're running a little behind here, someone make my comments very brief. My question first is employment. I know that a lot of people, that young people in their late twenties, early thirties during COVID lost their jobs. So those people should apply as well. I mean, they're not coming out of high school, they're not coming out of college, they're just unemployed. And so would you encourage them to apply as well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Without a doubt.
My second question or comment is on childcare. And the company, I guess I, free to say it, Chick-fil-A, that my daughter works for, they actually have a daycare center on, on site. And I'm going to tell you, it is a big drawing card for people now to be able to take their children to the daycare center. The employees encourage them during the day to possibly go down and visit the children at their lunch hour or that kind of thing. So I think we need to start thinking a little more along those lines and making childcare accessible to the parents and want the parents to be employees of, of some of these larger companies. And I'm not talking about the small ones, I'm talking about like the Hyundai plant. They could easily, easily put a childcare center on site, and I think it would make a world of difference.
I agree.
Okay. All right, let's go to the youth commission now. Come on.
I just wanted to ask, once completed, how many jobs, would there be, or an estimate on how many jobs?
At, at Gulfstream or?
At the Mitsubishi, or sorry, Hyundai plant?
There'll be eighty-five hundred jobs at that particular site. And then there's about another five to six thousand jobs that come with their suppliers.
All right, let's, let's go to Commissioner Harge.
I just have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we looking at any type of work re-entry programs for citizens who are?
Absolutely, that will definitely be a part of our effort.
Great.
All right, let's go to Commissioner Adams.
Sorry.
No, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I've got you listed.
Mr. Talison, I was in a conversation with somebody from Georgia Ports Authority the other day, and we keep talking about high school students. They have a great program for high school students in recruiting. They have an internship, then future employment. Guys might need to talk, talk with Georgia Ports about their program and how they actually get, get into the schools.
Absolutely, we've talked to them, I'm familiar with what you're talking about. And we'll definitely be, that will definitely be a part of our, our funnel and filter and all that stuff.
Thank you, sir.
It's called yes, that's what Georgia Ports got. All right, let's go, let's go now back to Commissioner Whitley and then Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll yield the floor to Mr. Keglatter.
Thank you, I've got to leave. I just, before your time, when the mega site was developed behind Triplett Park off of I-16 and Pine Baron Road and all.
I remember.
In order to get the Daimler Chrysler plant to come, they wanted to have on-off ramps on I-95 going over, Pine Baron Road going over I-95. That was, they agreed to do that. The state of Georgia was going to put the on-off ramps there.
And they never did.
Never did. The deal fell apart, but we're now, thankfully, it appears we're starting to fill that entire site up with, or getting closer and closer. But there's, the infrastructure's not in place to support what's going in there. That's something that CETA drove the site. I need CETA to drive with Georgia, them upholding their end of the bargain when they said that and it was all developed out there. It wasn't Georgia's fault that that deal fell apart, it wasn't your CETA's fault, but Georgia can hold up to their end of the deal and help us with our infrastructure on that. And that's not them doing something new for us, that's them doing something they told us they would do. Thank you.
And you asked me at the last meeting to talk to them about that?
Yes.
So I had that conversation Monday with the folks from GDOT.
Good.
Okay? And, and, and also understand that GDOT has for Chatham County, Bryan County, Effingham County, Bullock County, they have a coastal empire study, in which GDOT will be going to the legislature this coming legislation to ask for one point four or one point seven trillion dollars, all right, to do that infrastructure. And that talks about the expansion of the highways and stuff you talked about. And, and, and I've had conversations Monday with them about getting that put back in there, because it was, and there's other things that they took out.
They could spend half of that within a four-mile range of the mouth.
They just can't afford it.
Georgia Ports and help.
All right, so now let's go, let's go back to Commissioner Whitley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So one thing I will, I will just, I want to add three points. One, the discussions with City of Savannah, I know the big challenge that we have is the zoning issue, right? And so I'm just asking to be on the record to ask that whenever there is any type of rezoning, that's going to be, or excuse me, a site that's selected for economic development, to work with us, if it's in an area that y'all plan on having annexed, to discuss contiguous zoning. Because what has been happening is, you know, the zoning industrial, where, excuse me, industrial zoning is right next to residential agricultural zoning. And that's kind of why we're having those discussions. I also want to just be on record and saying thank y'all for dropping the heavy industrial piece. That was a big, a big move by y'all and I appreciate that. But just helping us to have that conversation with the City of Savannah and any other municipality in the future that, to make sure that we are really looking at the zoning as it relates to the properties that are adjacent, that are within unincorporated Chatham versus a newly annexed area. One question I have that I'm hoping that we can answer now is, how can one apply for one of these eighty-five hundred jobs at Hyundai?
So we have a link on our website and Hyundai has several links on their website. So if you, if you Google Hyundai Motor Group, Meta Plan America, you'll, you'll see all kind of avenues.
Plus, plus they can go to, if they don't have the, the ability to go to a website, they can go to Georgia WorkSource on Skidaway, right across from Memorial Stadium.
Right.
And they have the, they have all of the equipment and stuff that they can help. Plus they have advisors there who can help them to get into these, these kinds of jobs that's being offered, all right? They don't get them jobs, it's called, yeah, WorkSource, it's called Georgia WorkSource.
Coastal.
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 Yeah. And, and, and they've got Miss, goodness, her name runs away from me now, but.
Biggie Weber?
No, I was finna call her by maiden name, that's why I stopped.
Sharon?
Yeah, Sharon, yeah. I was finna call her maiden name, that's why I stopped, all right? Because I've known her that long. But let me do this.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one other point I wanted to share. When I don't satisfy my gluttony for punishment as a public servant. Mr. Chairman, I just have one other point I wanted to share. When I don't satisfy my gluttony for punishment as a public servant, a servant in the childcare industry. And one of the challenges, as we talk about this wage equilibrium thing, it's, that is an issue with childcare also. As you talked about, after COVID, only fifty percent of the childcare providers came back, and it's getting increasingly more difficult to not charge an arm and a leg and pay our early educators what they're worth. And, you know, and a recommendation that I've shared with some of our legislators is to see if there's an ability to allow early educators to tap into the state pension, teachers' pension, or maybe even healthcare. But as we talk about those childcare credits and stuff like that, that wage equilibrium is going to be an issue too. I want to be clear, you know. The Commissioner Stone talked about her daughter working at Chick-fil-A. You can go in and work at Chick-fil-A for more than that childcare worker's probably worth making. So we've got to be really aggressive with that. And I don't just say that because I'm in the business, but because I see that early education is a, a very pivotal in how we develop our workforce and our community at large. And if we're not investing in them and our teachers, we're really shooting ourselves in the foot.
I hear you. And also Department of Labor, you can go to Department of Labor also if you're looking for.
For the job. Got you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I got everybody. I saved me for last.
Yes, sir.
All right. And the reason I saved me for last is because I think there's some, there's some points that this commission need to know. For instance, the workforce study was driven by Ms. King from Georgia Power.
He was one of the partners, sure.
And the, what she did was she brought together all the industries that's here now. They included Hyundai, but it wasn't driven by Hyundai, all right? And what they were afraid of is what's going to happen. Hyundai offer all these higher-end paying jobs. Folks are going to be leaving International Paper, they're going to be leaving Gulfstream, they're going to be leaving Georgia Ports and going to the higher-paying jobs. So that's why the workforce study was kicked in the first place, okay? The second thing I want to do is, I'm gonna toot my own horn, and Ms. Anna can, and that's my favorite person, Ms. Anna. All right, because she's been working with me ever since I've been on the JDA, all right? She knows that the school part has been something that I've been pushing to get our kids trained. We start in ninth through twelfth grade, all right? And, and we still, I'm talking with the Board of Education and others to try to kind of get these dots connected. But she can tell you, and he can tell you, I'm glad to see that we're talking about getting it into the school system so that these kids can come out of schools being trained for it. But, and, 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 and I said to them, we may start in ninth through twelfth grade, but eventually we're going to have to go all the way down to third grade to get these kids on the right path. Am I right? All right, seeing they nod because I've been saying this ever since I've been on the JDA on the board, and I'm like a broken record, am I or not? And see, and I'm talking about us having our kids trained to step into these places. Because one of the things that drives me as your chairman is the fact that I look at the poverty rate in Chatham County, all right? And I connect it to the two areas, which are predominantly minorities and black, that have the highest poverty rate, and that's in Garden City and in the City of Savannah, all right? And so if we don't get these kids trained to go and to take these higher-end jobs and to be, to train them how to step into those jobs, and see, that doesn't take away anything from advanced training. And that, what I mean by that, the secondary schools and the universities, all right? Because everybody who want to go to college to be an engineer, I want them to go. Want to be technician of some kind, I want them to go. But there are those kids, and Commissioner Farrell alluded to, there are some people who sometimes get into the middle of it and then decide this ain't for me. All right, and they want another avenue. They are, to Commissioner's Harge's point, there are folks who are reentering that we need to trust that they own the right to get them into the workforce. These are things that I have been saying from day one, am I correct? And I've been pushing the JDA, and I've been pushing the school board, and Savannah has a, Savannah-Chatham County Public School has a unique opportunity. And I'm gonna say it publicly now because I've said it privately. If they blow it, we gonna miss it, all right? And I've had that meeting with them, and I hope to have some more. But let me just say this now. Monday, no, that was Tuesday I was at your meeting, right? All right, so it was Tuesday. I was in a meeting with some folks who do economics. And they said to us, and this is what's going to affect us sitting here, when we look at our EMT workers and we look at our workers for Chatham County, in the next eighteen to twenty-four months, we can expect to look at salaries that start at twenty-nine hun, twenty-nine dollars an hour. Not eighteen, not seventeen, not nineteen, but twenty-nine dollars an hour so that we can get over the poverty threshold, all right? Those were just things that were said to me in those meetings, and I don't take away from none of them. I go to them. But now what I wanted to do, Trip, is.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yes, I want to remind the board, we've got a.
Yeah, I understand.
Stop at eleven-thirty.
Okay, I understand. I, I got that too. But we got to do this here. This is important too. All right, I gave all of you a copy of a recommendation, Trip, because we talked about, and you, you, you talked about, about tax abatements and tax things that you give for companies that, that are coming.
Yes, sir.
All right. But we also have to serve the needs of those companies who are already here.
Yes, sir.
All right. So I was in the meeting that you all asked me to come to, and International Paper asked us to extend a tax abatement that they signed in two thousand and fourteen, and that they need, because they're getting some new equipments and things, they need that tax abatement to go be extended for another seven years. You, we on the same page?
Yes, sir.
All right. And so if you don't mind sharing with this commission why that's important for us to do.
Absolutely. So in two thousand and fourteen, let me go back. I keep talking about the incentive toolkit that we have that we're able to use to lure businesses in. We're able to abate real property taxes, which is basically land and buildings. We do not have the ability to abate personal property taxes. A lot of development authorities do, but we just, we don't have that ability. There is a provision, a constitutional amendment that was done for Chatham County that allows manufacturers to apply for a one-hundred percent abatement on personal property for a manufacturer that meets certain thresholds for a five-year abatement only on county M and O, right? Not many manufacturers, I don't know of any that have been really taking advantage of that. But what, what happened in two thousand and fourteen, International Paper came to us and says, look, we've got X amount of money that we need to deploy in capital to upgrade our equipment at certain facilities throughout the world. We have identified Savannah as one of those targets. And, you know, it's no different than you got a pot of money, do you want to go spend it here, there, there, there? And they said, look, we're interested in Savannah, but we've got, we've got the ability to deploy this money to various other facilities to where we get an abatement on that personal property. So we scrambled in two thousand and fourteen, and with the help of the commission, county attorney, county manager, we, we came up with an ordinance that this commission passed that allows basically personal property exemption, basically a phase-out schedule over seven years to where you have to deploy at least a hundred million dollars in capital, and you have to at least retain or hire four hundred jobs. So we're talking large investments. I think we've only used that two or three times, John, since we had this. And so International Paper, again, has come back and says, look, of all of our facilities in Savannah, they've got three different facilities. Gulfstream has, I mean, thirty or thirty-three different facilities. I mean, there's, I'm trying to show the scale. They came to us and said, we've got a, we've got a bucket of money we need to deploy. We got to buy new equipment, and we're looking around the United States where to go. We've identified Savannah. We want to do it at our three properties. Can we use the ordinance again? And we were like, we got to go talk to the commission. So we started with the staff and the chairman to see what the feedback would be. We're strongly in favor of it because we want to make sure that it's all about, when you have old facilities like International Paper, it's all about making sure they have the most updated equipment, because if they don't, they go away. And we don't want that to happen here. They've got about a thousand employees here with, between the three facilities. And so we've, we've come to y'all asking that we please utilize this ordinance again for International Paper so they can buy over a hundred million dollars more of equipment. Does that sum it up?
And the specific to that is that they want to invest a hundred and twenty million dollars.
That's correct.
Seven-year period, and they want to create an additional four hundred jobs, all right? And if you've been watching the commercials like I've been watching the commercials, International Paper using the same thing that they came to us with. They're advertising now for jobs starting at sixty-four thousand dollars a year to a hundred thousand dollar a year. You don't have to be trained. If you come, they'll train you, all right? And so that's what, what I gave you all, that, you should have gotten a copy of this Tuesday, but you didn't, and I understood that. I found that out last night. So what I, what I, what, what I want a trip to do is explain why they were coming to us and asking us to give them the extension, that seven-year extension on that tax abatement for the new equipment. Yes.
One, one other thing that you need to really remember about this is that this is a hundred and twenty million dollars of new investment.
Right.
New equipment. The existing facilities still pay one hundred percent on the property taxes. So it's not like they're getting a free ride. Just, that's all, only point I want to make.
My, my question is, how much money is that going to cost us to relieve them of that tax payment?
Linda, you, I could run the numbers and email, but I don't know if y'all.
Yeah, I, I tried, I talked to Mark yesterday, and he was going to try to get me a schedule. I mean, if you just do the straight math with a hundred and twenty million at forty percent times our mileage rate, et cetera, it's about five hundred thousand a year. But they're not talking about buying it all upfront. I mean, I think it's a phased-in.
Over, over two years.
Over seven years. So it would be less than that based on how they phased it in.
And that's total taxes. That's school?
No, that's just, that's just M and O.
So now, is that an extension of what we have been extending them? Or is that going to be something that's going to be less out of our budget?
It will be, it will be on new, new equipment. The equipment they have now, they would get.
I'm talking about the money that, I'm talking about the money that the county would receive had they paid the taxes.
Once they add that equipment, it would, it would, it's not in our budget now. So if you add the, as you add the equipment, it, it would just kind of flow through.
But now to answer her question.
Yeah.
To answer her question, all right? I'm only dealing with her question. If they don't buy the equipment, you're not, they're not going to pay taxes on it anyway.
Yeah.
So you, that means zero, all right? What's in our favor is to allow them to buy the equipment and then let the equipment come in on time. And at the end of seven years, they pay the one hundred percent, all right? So you're talking about, the difference you're talking about is, this is a company that's already here. We're giving tax abatements to new companies that's coming.
Right, right.
They're trying to exist because other places have closed, all right? Other paper markets have closed.
Correct.
What International Paper is trying to do is, they've got a demand to export more paper, but the machine and stuff that they're going to wrap the thing so that it's covered, so that it's protected while it's being shipped, all right? So for us to extend the tax abatement means that, simple math and like, just drew the raw numbers. If they put four hundred jobs on the market, all right, and they cover Chatham County, and the plants are in Port Wentworth and in Savannah, with four hundred jobs, that means four hundred taxpayers who make sixty-four thousand dollars. And I'm going to use that bottom scale. And I'm not going to use that top scale because that commercial says sixty-four thousand to a hundred. Let's just use the sixty-four. You get four hundred people that's on the tax road now who bought houses, buy cars, buy clothes, buy food, paying taxes. We get the benefits of those four hundred people times sixty-four thousand, all right? That's the benefit that comes to it. But it's not taking anything from us. Because if they don't buy the equipment, they're not going to pay taxes on it anyway. Right now, all the equipment that they have on their facilities, they pay one hundred percent of the taxes. So therefore, you know, when you look at the large-scale things, there's not a detriment to us. Because if they don't put the equipment on there, we don't get the money anyway, all right? But if we allow them to put the equipment there and give them abatement, which you say, Linda says, is about five hundred thousand dollars a year.
That, that would be the worst.
That would be the worst, all right? And then it comes in, all right? Now, one more question. Go ahead.
So I just want to say, I like the idea of four hundred jobs, but we got a whole bunch of other jobs to fill.
I, I agree with you.
But aside from that, I think that considering that it's on personal property and not actual property taxes, it would be on something that we're not receiving now. It's not in our digest now. We're already doing good financially. I would like to make a motion that we approve the.
No.
I can't do that?
No, let me tell you.
Oh, it's not, oh, it's not on the agenda. It's not on the agenda. Two shakes.
Don't run too fast because you're running in the wrong race, all right?
I ain't running in the wrong race.
Let me get you, let me get you. The first thing I would like to do now, is there any other questions now? Yes, sir.
First of all, we got five minutes to wrap this meeting up, but if we want to beat this one, I thought we just, but, okay. So I'm judging from your comments, you're assuming that this international corporation would not invest a hundred and twenty million dollars in order to make more money unless we give them a five hundred thousand dollar, uh, corporate gift. I mean, that.
I'm not assuming that.
Okay. But it, it sounded like it was an either-or. We give them this five hundred thousand, or not a penny's going to get invested. And.
That could happen.
Of course it could.
It could happen.
It could.
But I see, I'm not assuming that.
Right.
Okay.
But just, uh.
The, I, I would, if I could add something, Commissioner, they have, International Paper is recently, to the chairman's point, they've just closed two facilities, one in Florida and one in Mississippi. We're talking thousands of jobs. We should probably get them here. But we, they have these resources to spend at certain facilities. And I tell people about incentives all the time. Don't hate the player, hate the game. And it's just, it's a competitive landscape that we're in. And if we don't, if we're not creative and doing things like this, they're going to go somewhere else.
Okay. How many of those plants that they closed were sitting next to the busiest seaport for their exporting of their linerboard all over the country in those containers?
The one in Florida, I think, was near Panama Seaport. I think, I think, don't quote me on that. I have to go check.
Yeah. So how many? They wouldn't even be considering putting a hundred and twenty million dollars if they weren't going to get a return on investment. And if you look at five hundred thousand over a hundred and twenty million, that's a very small piece. However, I've got constituents that are complaining about their fire fee of two or three hundred dollars. If they invested this and this money went into M and O, and the M and O started picking up some of the fire costs from tax digest growth, who, who's going to have the more positive impact?
But that's an assumption.
Lots of things are assumptions.
That's an assumption. What, what, what we can only deal with is the facts that are presented to us, right? And the fact that invented to, and presented to us was, was IP came and said, this is an investment that we are at the threshold of making, all right? It's going to improve us by four hundred jobs. It's going to improve us to hire folks beginning at sixty-four thousand dollars a year.
Improve or did it say retain? I mean.
Well, the facility is already here. The people, the people are becoming in, or the people are be being hired. Because the people aren't hired yet, and they're not, and I don't know whether they come from those.
Yeah.
Those, those ones that closed down, I don't know where they come from, but one thing I do know, they're going to land in Chatham County. See? The potential for them landing in Chatham County is great. So now, the reason why I brought all this up is because I need a motion from, from some of you in a second, and I need to get the votes to add this to the agenda. That's the first thing we need to do. Can I get that motion?
Yeah, so, yeah, we, we do, we do, because it's not on the agenda now.
Right, it's not on the agenda.
Some moved.
Second.
Yeah. All right. Properly motion is second that we add it to the agenda. Are you ready for the question? Please vote. All right, I got all votes in. It's added to the agenda. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, that's the end of what we need to do there. All right, let's move on. So we can get, we're going to get to, we don't have a chairman item. We don't have no commissioner item. We don't have no table items, all right?
Miss, with Mr. Chairman, we still need to actually vote to.
Yeah, I know, I know. I'm coming.
And we didn't specify what part of the agenda we were going to put that in, now that I think about it. Does that matter?
No, I can just, can I just put it under? Individual item, right?
All you've done is add the thing to the.
To the agenda, and I can bring it up.
Right.
Right, anything else?
Yeah, yeah, and I'll get it there, I'll get you, trust me, I'll get you. Yeah, yeah, all right. Item for individual action, request approval of the following budget amendments and transfer in the federal, uh, um, opioid settlement fund, appropriate four hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars. Fund balance to increase the operating budget for prior years, unex, unexpended, um, funds. Increase revenue and expenditures ninety-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars for supplemental fund. Two, in the multi-grant fund, increase revenue and expenditure, uh, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight dollars for the Victims of Crime Act. Three, in the capital improvement program, transfer four hundred thou-, I mean, forty thousand dollars CIP. Um, contingency to establish the building safety software project. B, transfer one million, six hundred thousand CIP continues to the Hudson Island Wall Stabilization Project, is there a motion?
Well, motion to approve the item, uh, as stated, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
The properly motion and second that we approve the individual item, are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. All right, now, two, independent. Request bold approval of a Second Amendment tax verification, uh, agreement between the Savannah Economic Development Authority, CETA.
Didn't we remove it? We removed it.
No, listen, y'all, he's, he, he got it.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Ready? And the Chatham County Board of Commission to allow partial personal property tax abatements for investment in the International Paper main mill and its Port Wentworth plant. The exemptions are based upon a hundred and twenty million dollars of new capital investment and the creation or maintenance of four hundred jobs. CETA upon Chatham County's authority will take title of the personal property during the seven-year abatement period to allow for the partial tax exemption, is there a motion?
A motion to approve the item as stated, Mr. Chairman.
The properly motion and second that we approved the item, are you ready for the question? You're in, all please cast your votes.
That was pretty smooth, Mr. Chairman. Had everybody nervous.
It does what you do, thank you. All right, let's move on now, nobody expressed anything to take anything off the action calendar, so may I have a motion to exempt the action calendar's entirety?
I'll make the motion with the, um, change to the minutes for my absence.
Yeah, I'm coming to that.
Okay.
Yeah, hold on, y'all, take your foot off the accelerator, please. No, we took two off, remember?
Took two off.
We dropped two in, 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 in the pre-meeting. All right? We got the motion, we got the second, to accept the action calendar's entirety?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any questions? Please cast your votes. All right, now, let's go on to first readers, all right? Uh, request bold approval to update the waiting period for participation in the Chatham County Employee Retirement Plan. amend the purchase orders as of January fifth, twenty twenty-four, as it is related to the local preference provision. amend the Chatham County Codebook as of January tw-, uh, fifth, twenty twenty-four, as it relates to the local vendor preference provision. That's read into the record, we have the second reading at our next meeting. And now, when we adopt the action calendar, we change from ACCG to NACO for Commissioner Stone, all right? See, all we need to do is give instructions there, we didn't need to, we already voted it. And we, we straightened it out and, 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 um, thing, all right? Information, Mr. Manager?
Uh, no, sir, uh, other than the, uh, report, the information item from the Parks and Recreation, uh, Department, uh, we don't have anything else.
All right.
Mr.
Yes, sir.
If I could just make a.
Sure.
My chat, uh, just an announcement, um, for the District Six citizens, I will be hosting a town hall meeting tomorrow at Mosaic Church, ten AM. Uh, Mosaic Church is at Seven Kane Brick Road and we'll be discussing a lot of hot topics. So if you are a Sixth District resident, please, uh, join me at Mosaic Church tomorrow, ten AM, uh, look forward to seeing you there, thank you.
All right, anything else? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, it's at y'all's discretion, we've got some items for executive session, but there's nothing that can't.
Can't wait?
Can't wait.
All right. But that's up to y'all. Okay.
We need time to, uh, flip the room for our legislative luncheon, so we need to.
So at twelve?
At twelve o'clock, yes, sir.
All right, but now, we are going into executive session because there's one appointment we need to take care of, all right? So there is a need for us to go into executive session for appointment, all right? The other things, attorney said can wait, so we'll take all them off except the appointment, we're just meeting executive session. And meanwhile, while we in the executive session, they will transform the room.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we're going to make that appointment, but I would imagine if there's time, can we just go ahead with any items that the county manager might have until twelve o'clock?
Well, he said he didn't have any. You're talking about in the executive session?
Yes.
All right, yeah.
Just to, just if we've got time.
Well, listen, I'm going by what, what was said to me.
I understand.
We'll have, so, personnel.
We're going adjourned to executive session for a personnel.
Litigation.
Litigation and acquisition, all right? Is there a motion? Don't move, don't move, is there a move, there's a motion?
Second.
Don't move, there's a second, all in favor, please cast your votes, all right? We adjourned, we go into executive session.